I'd like to call to order-
Absolutely.
The Planning Commission meeting for April 3, 2019. At this time, I'd ask you to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First item on our agenda is an adoption of the agenda. If I could get a motion to adopt the agenda if there's no changes to it?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on, since there's no minutes tonight, we'll move on to committee reports. We only have two reports tonight. Our first one is Mr. Oats with Transportation.
Yes, sir, we met on March 25th, had four items of discussion. The first was a request about a access break at Route 11, just off the ramp of 37 down in Kernstown. There's a vacant piece of property there. A couple of years ago, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution supporting the access break. However, as the applicants move forward, I guess the parameters of VDOT are too expensive, so they requested that we kind of cherry pick certain things they should have to do and go back to VDOT and try to get VDOT to relieve them of some of their responsibilities. The committee voted or decided no that we weren't going to get in the middle of that. If they wanted to do it, they needed to follow VDOT rules. The second item was a discussion of the traffic light at Old Charlestown Road. Our comprehensive plan and VDOT and planners would like to see a roundabout in that area instead of a traffic light. However, the proffered conditions from the Stevenson Village or Snowden Bridge rezoning only has money for the stoplight. So VDOT and the county are going to study that section. However, the goal is to either have that stoplight up or the roundabout constructed prior to the school opening. So I imagine it's going to be a stoplight. Third item is the Northern Y over at Russell 150. About six months ago, the applicant asked that we approve doing a 30 percent study. The applicant footed the bill for that, claimed the project could probably be done for 2.4 million, and they would put up some money, the county would put up some money. The estimate came back after the 30 percent design at $6 million, and we decided that unless the applicant was willing to put up a whole lot more money, then that project's going to die. So that went back to their lab. The fourth item is SMART scale. Basically, we got a breakdown of where the county stands on receiving funding from the state for our local roads. SMART scale's been up and running now for about five or six years. It was created to try and even the playing field so that all the localities across Virginia would have a fair shot at getting money from the state. And now we're about six years in, and now the money's falling back to Tidewater in Northern Virginia again, so we're not receiving any money. That's my report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Oats. I'm going to keep you front stage. You'll do, uh, one Frederick Water.
Yes, sir, just give me one second here.
Take your time.
Frederick Water Board of Directors met on March 19th, and first item up was we adopted the new water and wastewater rates for Town of Stevens City. It was decided to charge the town the same per month rate as any other customer for water. Not that they've been paying us, but then the second item was about the sewer. We calculated the sewer rate based on the current contract that we have and sent that forward to Stevens City. The second thing discussed was wastewater flows out of Stevens City. They've exceeded the agreed amount of 250,000 gallons a day based on a monthly average for more than three months, which means they need to stop hooking any more people into their sewer system until they get it fixed because it's overloading our system and the excess sewage runs into the lagoon down next to Stevens Run Pump Station. So far, it's not breached the banks, but every time it overflows, we do have to contact DEQ and alert them. Next item was discussion of the Lake Frederick Elevated Water Tank. If you remember, a few months back, we had to condemn the property in order to get this lot, build the tank. And the tank is there to provide water pressure, storage, and flows for the existing community as well as allow the developer to continue building houses. That contract was awarded to Phoenix Fabricators and Erectors for 1.75 million. And finally, the construction of Route 37 Water Main Loop. That contract was awarded to Garnet Construction for 3.9 million, and that is a 20-inch water main going from round hill down to the water tank at the end of 37 at 81. And that will connect our northern and southern service areas together so that either the Deal Plant could serve the northern end or the Anderson Plant to the north can serve the southern end. If either plant ever goes offline, we have redundancy. The water tank and the 37 loop are both nine-month projects, so both of them should be completed before the end of the year. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Very good report. Seeing no one from the city Planning Commission liaison, we'll move past that and we'll- the Board of Supervisor liaison, Ms. Trout cannot be with us tonight, but Mr. Mike Ruddy is filling in her stead, so if you would please pass her report on to us, I would thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Trout wanted to report on the two most recent Board of Supervisor meetings. On March 13th, the board approved the extension of the cable franchise agreement with Comcast. They approved the 2019 to '24 capital improvement plan for Frederick County. The board denied rezoning '03, '18 for Carpers Valley, and the Bruce Town Road Comprehensive Plan Amendment was postponed until a later meeting. That will be up at a forthcoming Board of Supervisors meeting. On their March 28th board meeting, that was set aside for the public hearing on the county's budget. There were no planning items at that meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for filling in. Next item on our agenda is citizen comments. This portion of the agenda is for anyone that wants to come before, speak to any matter that's not on the agenda, that's not a public hearing or information discussion item, so if there's anyone who wants to come forward to citizen comment, this is your time. See you, no one? We'll move into our next item on our agenda. Got one? I'm sorry?
I came here to do a business meeting for the past 48 years when you built those townhouses out there on Double Church Road. What's you gonna put up some more out there? Didn't notify me on the first one. Now you notified me, now you'd already approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I think this gentleman, if it would be appropriate, could approach the podium so we could make sure we get his comments on the record. That would be appreciated.
Sir. If you would, just state your name.
My name's Richard Medley.
And where you live.
I'm living on Double Church Road, Stevens City.
There you go. Thanks, sir.
Well, now, 48 years ago, I built a house out there. You never notified me about what's going to go up around me. Two years after I built the house out there, you put up townhouses out there. Now you putting up more on the other side of me. Now you notify me, which you'd already approved for the man to put the townhouses up. You put someone down the road there for Turner family. Now you on this side of Turner family facing Richard Louis Medley, Sr. I don't approve of the townhouses because the townhouses, people living in there now, I had to call Sheriff's Department several times. People trashing up against my fence line, and they never come removed. I had to call Sheriff's Department, they had to come out there. I don't know what they did, but anyway, they got it moved. But I don't say everybody's like that, but what I'm up against out there, if they got enough money, they can buy me. I'll go somewhere else. I know Shenandoah County's got plenty of homes out there.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments.
I don't approve of it, but you already proved it, so why should I have to be here? But I'm here anyway.
All right. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Citizen comments anymore under- not on the agenda? All righty. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing item. It's a conditional use permit number 01-19 for Patrick and Alicia Smith, submitted for a bed and breakfast and campground in the RA zoning district. The property is located at 591 Valley View Trail, Winchester, Virginia. It's identified with property identification number 48-4-33 in the Back Creek, Mass. Gerald District. Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm here this evening with conditional use permit 0119 for the Smiths. This property, again, is located at 591 Valley View Trail, which is part of the Great North Mountain Wilderness Area subdivision. The property is accessed from Back Mountain Road through the Shawnee Land Recreational Community via 50-foot wide gated private driveway. The property is presently zoned RA or rural areas, and the current land use of the site is vacant or undeveloped. The applicant is proposing a bed and breakfast and a campground as part of this conditional use permit application. If I can direct your attention to the screen, the subject property owned by the Smiths at 591 Valley View Trail is highlighted in blue. Valley View Trail, which is the private access driveway, runs on the northern boundary of the property and connects to the Shawnee Land Community to the northeast through the Timber Ridge Trail. The property is surrounded by other like properties, vacant rural, mostly undeveloped lots. There are some adjacent or nearby residences as well. Again, directing your attention to the screen, here is the Valley View Trail. When you exit the Shawnee Land Community, there's a notice about it being a private drive. You go about a half mile further down the road, and you will encounter the gated access. The Smiths' property is just beyond this gated access. The Frederick County zoning ordinance provides definitions for our consideration of bed and breakfast and campground. Bed and breakfast is an owner or operator occupied, single-family detached dwelling which contains no more than one kitchen and 10 or fewer guest rooms which are occupied for sleeping purposes for guests other than temporary personal guests of the family in a dwelling unit for compensation with or without meals. A campground is a lot or parcel upon which two or more campsites are located, established or maintained for occupancy by the general public as temporary living quarters for recreation, education, or vacation purposes. The zoning ordinance further provides additional regulations for the specific use defined in 165-204-03, campgrounds and tourist traps- or tourist camps, sorry. And it's the zoning ordinance regulates minimum lot size, density, setbacks, permanent residence on the premise, buffers and screens, and compliance with the Virginia Department of Health campground requirements. This conditional use permit application from Patrick and Alicia Smith proposes an owner occupied residence on the property with a bed and breakfast with up to five guest rooms, up to 30 primitive tent-only campsites, up to 10 partially enclosed bunkhouses, supporting campground infrastructure which may include bathhouses or kitchen, that the property may be developed in phases, and that use of the property is intended for Tuscaloosa Trail hikers and other recreationalists. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with this recreational amenity in Frederick County, the Tuscaloosa Trail generally runs southwest to northeast. It totals in Frederick County about 26 miles, and the entire Tuscaloosa Trail extends approximately 252 miles through West Virginia, Maryland, Virginia, and Pennsylvania. The Smiths' property is generally located near this section of the trail, and a portion of the Tuscaloosa Trail does cross the northeast corner of their property. Again, directing your attention to the screen, this is an illustrative sketch provided by the applicant as part of their application. For orientation, Valley View Trail runs along the northern portion of their property. The Tuscaloosa Trail generally runs parallel to this, crossing their property and back through the Great North Mountain Wilderness Area. The applicant has shown on the screen an area where they intend to have the campsite center on the flattest part of their property with a home site generally midway down the property in the right-hand corner of the screen. You see the gravel area shown here. This is a cliff, and the property basically falls off straight down along this ridge. This proposed conditional uses are generally consistent with our 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The property is identified in the Comprehensive Plan to remain generally rural and agricultural in nature. The Tuscaloosa Trail is a recreation feature that's also identified in our 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and the trail is noted as an important feature in the county for recreation and tourism, and the county supports a growing number of activities as well as an outstanding recreational opportunities such as the Tuscaloosa Hiking Trail. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff would recommend the following conditions: that all review agency comments be complied with at all times; that the development of the property may include up to a maximum of five bed and breakfast guest rooms; a maximum of 30 tent-only campsites with any required supporting infrastructure, including bathhouses; a maximum of 10 partially enclosed bunkhouses and supporting infrastructure such as separate commercial kitchen to serve campground guests. An engineered site plan in accordance with the requirements of Article 8 of the Frederick County Zoning Ordinance shall be submitted to and subject to approval by Frederick County prior to the establishment of both the bed and breakfast and the campground uses. The building permits would be required for all buildings and structures. The applicant be allowed one monument-style sign with a maximum sign area not to exceed 50 square feet and not to exceed 10 feet in height, and that any expansion or modification of this use would require the approval of a new conditional use permit application. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors for the CUP regarding the proposed bed and breakfast and campground. For the public record, the Planning Commission has been provided all of the letters received from various citizen groups as of this morning. You've also been provided a petition, a letter from the Great North Mountain Section Owners Association, and a letter from the chairperson of the Shawnee Land Sanitary District Advisory Committee. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Patrick and Alicia Smith, the applicants are here this evening as well, and I believe they have a few remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions for Mr. Klein? Mr. Oats?
Yeah, and the conditions. Is there anything preventing, say this were to go forward, the tent sites from going in without any bathhouses or- because you don't need a building permit, per se, for tent spaces?
Under our supplemental use requirements for campgrounds, it does require that you get a camping permit from the Virginia Department of Health, complying with Virginia Department of Health standards. Their standards, depending on the number of campsites that you are proposing, may trigger the need for water, trash, a restroom facility. So in complying with that permit, they would be ensuring that those facilities are in place prior to the opening of a campground.
Has there been any perk sites or any exploration centers yet to see if we'll even perk the-
I will let the applicant address that question.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein. Correct me if I'm wrong, but couldn't Mr. Smith build a residence on this property, not calling it a B&amp;B, as many rooms as he wants to build, without a CUP?
Yes, he could build a residence with as many rooms as would be available based on the sanitary system that he could put on the property.
And also, I want it understood, and I think there's confusion, to the fact that this is a tent campground. Can he clear a spot off and put a tent campground without a CUP?
The property owner could camp on the property and have friends and family come up to camp on the property without a conditional use permit, but when he goes beyond having one campsite, then it triggers the need for a conditional use permit-
Okay.
-based on our definition of campsite.
Now, I call them lean-to's, but you all call them bunkhouses. Now, I believe if I knew a property owner up there that the trail went across, if I got his permission, I could go build a bunkhouse on that Tuscaloosa Trail without a CUP.
Correct, because that would be one or less campsites.
So therefore, the CUP basically, if he doesn't call this a bed and breakfast, is basically would be helping the surrounding citizens to the fact that it's limiting him to how many rooms he can put on his residence, and also how many tents he can put on his residence. Is that not true?
In regards to-
CUP.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing I'd like to ask you, this Valley View Trail is a private road, Valley View Road, about a Valley View, whatever it is, trail. That is a private road.
Valley View Trail is a private 50-foot wide driveway that serves the Great North Mountain Wilderness Area subdivision, and it's maintained by the owners of that subdivision.
And right now, it's pretty well, I understand you, to say that there's, what, maybe one, two, or three residents on that whole trail, and everything else is open ground.
I believe there's one resident currently living in the subdivision, but the property owners access their property through Valley View Trail.
Now, all these nooks and corners that you got to go through Shawnee Land to get to Valley View Trail, who owns those trails?
The roads in the Shawnee Land Community are owned by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, and they are maintained by the Sanitary District under the guidance of their Sanitary District Manager, who is an employee of the Frederick County Department of Public Works.
So it's not up to the residents, other than fees paid, to upkeep the Shawnee Land roads?
Yes, the fees that the residents pay are part of their community dues for the amenities and including maintenance of the road.
And I also read that, I think Mr. Smith is paying fees for three lots? Is that what I'm understanding, to Shawnee and two to the Great North Mountain Dior?
Mr. Smith pays fees as a current residence of the Shawnee Land Community, and Mr. Smith pays an additional fee for his lot in the Great North Mountain Wilderness subdivision to use the road for access.
So he has permission to use Shawnee Land roads?
Yes, sir, he does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Ambrose?
Just one. Are there going to be fees or charges to those who make use of this facility?
I will defer that question to the applicant to speak to his operation.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Klein, you said one campsite. What's the definition of one campsite? If you have 10 friends come up, can they put up 10 tents, or can they use one big tent that I'll send you to stay in? What's that uniqueness of the word there?
I don't believe our definition goes into the uniqueness, but I will let maybe Mr. Charon speak to that. He's the zoning administrator, and he would be the one responsible for making the determination of what would be one campsite.
Well, you seem to make a big issue of one campsite. That's why I was asking the question, but Mr.-
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Perhaps we could further define that if we wanted to. I think common sense would prevail, and I imagine that if one campsite would probably be one tent, the additional campsites would be additional tents that may come on up. So I would imagine that that is how that would be interpreted by planning staff during zoning enforcement. However, if we did want to define that further, we could certainly do so here through the conditional use permit process.
Well, to be clear, for tonight, we're going to classify as one campsite's one tent.
Absolutely.
Is that- or one of these shelters that we have seen? Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a fair approach, and I think you see the general area that was identified in the exhibit that shows a kind of a general area where those campsites will be located, so I think we can all move forward from that premise. The applicant, I know, has a few things to show in a little presentation, maybe, which could illustrate what they're proposing to do on the site here a little clearer for everybody's benefit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Well, I kind of have a little problem with that, because then anytime somebody that has a farm has 10 or 15 of their friends or their kids' friends out there and they pitch 10 tents, they're in violation?
We're not out enforcing farming and recreational camping in that scenario. Absolutely not. It's not something we're going to get into. Here, as we know, we have a proposed use that meets the definition of a campground that is in our zoning ordinance. We- obviously, we can endorse that through the approved conditional use permit process. There's a lot of camping that happens in Frederick County, and we don't want to go chasing that tail.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ruddy. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Klein. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? State your name and-
Hello, yes, sir. My name is Patrick Smith, and this is my wife, Alicia, and we live at 591- or we get our mail at 591 Valley View Trail.
Okay.
So, got a little presentation here we all kind of heard a little bit about. Some of us can kind of go over what Tyler already covered. A little bit about us, me and my wife are fairly local. We grew up in Jefferson County, West Virginia. We- my- Patrick, that's me, I'm a WVU graduate, I'm an aerospace mechanical engineer. I worked for the Navy for 10 years, and now I work as a project manager for the Army Corps of Engineers. My wife, Alicia, is a cosmetologist for 10 years, and she does exercise, health, and life coaching for about eight years now. She's also a property manager and a full-time mom. Lily, our daughter, who's somewhere right there, she goes to the Independent School of Winchester. As a family, we enjoy traveling, spending time in national parks, hiking, and our family time. So here's the site. You can see in the lower right-hand corner, it's not clear up there, but that's Shawnee Land at the base of the mountain. On the lower left-hand corner, you have Wild Acres, and then right in the middle, you can kind of see the marker. It's kind of like a teal color there is where the site location is. You can see the mountain face there, the rock cliffs, and our lot goes maybe three-quarters of the way down the face of the mountain, drops a little over 1,000 feet or so down the mountain. It's a beautiful spot. So there it is on the 2D from looking down. Tyler kind of showed, we have a plaque, we have to the west, we have a PATC where the trail cuts through. To the south, we have Seth Castile, he's the only resident in the neighborhood, full-time living there. Then ours is kind of right in the middle. And then to the north of us, we have Ms. Helen Walker, who has sent us an email in support of the project. And then to the southwest there is the Thousand Acre Mountain Falls Hunt Club, which we also have endorsement from through David Frye, who's one of, I think, seven or eight members of the hunt club, and he presented it to their staff meeting on Saturday. He wasn't able to make it because his good friend had a terrible tragedy and passed away today. So, let's see. This is the same plaque Tyler showed. So you see at the top there, we have the trail access, and then our house site is the green house with the little flag on it. It's right near some beautiful overlooks, and then as far as the campsites, you'll see later on in the presentation, there's several beautiful spots located throughout the lot. As far as for the site plan, I kind of picked that green area because it was the flattest spots, and talking to the health department, I wasn't sure, the inspections department, I wasn't sure, you know, what kind of access and handicap-type access they were going to require, so I kind of said it was going to be around the flat developable area. But there's sites all over, even down under the cliffs, working on putting some trails into the different spots, and I'll get into that with more pictures here. This is last spring, we were working on some trails. There was already the old Valley, the original Valley View Trail before they cut the road in, was just literally a trail, and it was overgrown, and we kind of cleared it out. And here's a view to the south from one of the overlooks. Little hazy day there, but you can see all the way on a clear day, you can see, yeah, there's 180-degree view, you can see from Harpers Ferry all the way down into George Washington National Forest, so the whole southern Shenandoah Valley there. There's my wife, our dog, Bill, and join some of the overlooks. And Lily says he's a boy doggy. So this is just some of the stuff we like to do, enjoy some of the beautiful exotic wildlife up there. It's- stuff we like to do, enjoy some of the beautiful exotic wildlife up there. It's different almost every time we go up there. Here's the Tuscarora Trail, which is, like I said, Tyler mentioned, passes through the property. That's our dog, Carly, with us there. This is a picture of, there's a massive boulder field that, I don't know how big it is, it's several acres, but this is Lily, and to scale, you can kinda see my friends back there scaling some of the rocks. And it's hard for pictures to do it justice, but it's pretty amazing when you're there. It's something that reminds me of a national park. So here's some of the potential camping sites. The one to the upper left, there's a rock, it's got maybe like 100 square feet underneath the rock, that's kind of a natural shelter. And there's kinda little caves that cut in. In the summertime, it kinda blows cool air at you. It's a nice place to cool off and camp. They're scattered all over the ridgeline to the stretches from the north to the south of the property. Here's the site for the bed and breakfast, or our house. We're above this kinda rock line here, and we're looking to do kind of an off-grid style. We have power to the Valley View Trail, but we wanna kinda do a low-impact build with the house. And we have lots of different ideas. And me and some of my buddies at the Army Corps have come up with some different plans, and we greenhouses, and gray water recirculation and stuff. So we're gonna have some challenges with the building inspections department, but this is just fun for us. So. What's next? Tyler tells me I submit, and the building department says I submit a site plan, and we'll probably do it in a couple phases, you know, maybe a couple campsites, our house first, then maybe add some rooms for friends and family, maybe some nonprofit events. I was an Eagle Scout, so might have some scouts up. My wife has some clients with her exercise group, and they might do some weekend kinda outdoor events. Lily's school has expressed some interest in sending the kids up for some trail days and exploring. And so, there's lots of different things we'd like to do. We wanna be involved with the community and have some of that fun stuff. The rest of my slides are kinda backups, some research I've done, from some of the comments we've had. I will add, John Dar wanted to be, he's the committee member of the Great North Mountain HOA where we live, and he just sent me a text not 10 minutes ago. He says, "Patrick, not going to make it tonight due to work, but board's official position is that we have no problem with what you are doing on your property. Also, after reading the article in the covenants on your culvert, I don't believe you are in violation, and we'll get with Phil on that. The culvert across your driveway will not inhibit the natural flow of water." So that's just something that came up in probably some of the reading material you guys were provided, so. Just wanted to clarify that. I'm trying to think, is there anything else?
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Questions for the applicant?
55 to 12.
Any questions, Mr. Oats?
Do you envision most of the tents being used by hikers or people driving up to stay and need an area to park?
No, sir. Let me get to the slide here. So my vision, I've stayed in a lot of shelters as a hiker in the Boy Scouts, and I've had some good experiences. When I saw it, that little section, the trail cuts, clips our property, I was gonna, you know, just put a bunkhouse there. And there's an overlook to the west, you can see into the rolling hills of West Virginia. So it's actually got a name. I met John Spies, who's with the PATC, and he told us the name of the overlook. I can't recall what it is, but it would be nice to have a shelter right by the overlook if somebody wanted to camp there. That would be the only, quote, "open to the public," you know, so if you come off the trail, it's just first come, first served. Everything else is gonna be private. There's not gonna be people wandering in, you know. It's gonna be reservations or event-based, or just our personal friends and family, so. For the rest of the property.
Mr. Marsh?
Now, okay, to back that up, you are not going to advertise this to the public at all?
No, sir.
As a bed and breakfast or campground or nothing of that nature?
We have no intent of, it's just gonna be us. So if we open it to the general public, we have enough network and friends and different activities we're involved in that we'll have no problem keeping...
So I noticed that you stated nonprofit, and that's what you're figuring on, nonprofit?
Yes, sir.
And he asked you the question, was there fees? So if you're not gonna invite the public, you're not gonna have fees. So it's strictly family, invite a guest, that type thing?
Yes, sir. We don't intend to. Maybe to cover some costs, as a nonprofit might do, we might request some donations, or just, you know, be totally donation-based. So if you wanna give, you can. So we're thinking about, depending on where it kinda goes, it's very preliminary for us. So we'll see, maybe one day it'll lead to a 501(c), it'll be official, and, you know, have the PATC groups come out and stay if they wanna do a trail day or something. I think next Sunday, we're doing some, putting some signs up in the area. So something like that, have the place for the guys to stay. But, yeah, we wanna keep it kinda donation-based. Not interested in anything more than that.
Well, I kept seeing this word, and all the emails are reading "commercial, commercial." So it is not a commercial project.
Correct, yeah. There's a lot of...
Now, tell me about hunting. There's a lot of wide-open countryside there, and I noticed in one of the emails, there was some question about hunting, and somebody gonna get shot, and one of the campers might die. The properties there, do the individual people that own those properties, do they post their own land? Is it posted as a group for group hunting? Can you tell me a little bit of situation? You say you're a hunter yourself?
Yes, sir, yeah. The kinda general scene is, like I said, there's one permanent resident. He's to the south of us. He's full-time and a hunter. So the property lines are clearly marked. And otherwise, there's a few part-time, there's one vacation house at the end of the lot, and the guy comes occasionally with his family. Otherwise, you don't really see too many people. And as a general rule, for our activities, you know, I'm familiar with the hunting season, so, you know, we're not gonna be necessarily out wandering around, probably. But, you know, if people are, I know people trespass, and we have the hunting club to the south of us. So we're gonna try to mark as well as we can and try to enforce that. So just pretty standard kinda practices.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thomas?
Have you noticed you get a lot of people on the Tuscarora Trail that come through and just spend the night on their own there?
There, no. There's not a lot of traffic. I think when I met with John Spies, and he was talking, he said, last year, they had six through hikers that coordinated with him, you know, for food drops and supplies. That's not a lot, compared to the Appalachian Trail, there's probably thousands in a year. So they're also trying to bring awareness to that, to try to, you know, get more people to use the trail since it's there and so well-maintained. I also got an email from the guy to the south of us that maintains eight miles south of where we're gonna be maintaining. And he's excited about it and looking forward to coming out and seeing what we got.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
This really sounds like a business to me. You're gonna have a sign. Are you telling us you're never gonna charge for anything?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're...
So we can put that in the restrictions?
Yeah, we're not gonna have a sign, and actually, our HOA rules prohibit a sign. So we're not gonna have a sign. There'll be a sign that says "The Smiths," but that's about it. So. That was, I think, a standard thing that was put in for the CUP application.
Well, I think it's in there, so we'd probably work with staff. That's probably something that would be stricken out, I mean, at some point, if it's not...
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's fine.
Any other questions?
I actually have a question for staff.
Okay. Let's get through the applicant, and we'll come back to that. Let me ask, this gate that we see in the picture?
Yes, sir.
Do you currently access it through that road and that gate to this property when you just wanna go up there and spend the day with your family? Is that how you get there?
Yes, sir.
And that's how you anticipate getting there if you build a house?
Actually, no. Our plan is to buy the lot to the north of us, which I have a contract with Ms. Helen Walker, and first right of refusal. And depending on the outcome of this, we plan to cut the driveway in from, but the upper right, the diagonals portion of Valley View, basically cutting straight through to the green house location there. So that would be the private drive before the gate. So the gate would turn into kind of like a service entrance to the back and not affect the current resident.
Would you still have access through that gate to your property, though, for service?
Yes, sir. Yeah, as a member of the HOA, I get a key. Every member gets a key.
I was gonna ask that question. Is there keys issued, or how's that done? Or is there a keeper of the gate, or what, you know?
Every resident gets a key.
Okay.
Or two, I believe. We have two keys, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, could you come back one moment, please, for Mr. Mo's question?
Tyler, just to kinda get my arms around this a little bit more, okay? So is it strictly because they wanna be able to host groups and campers from their various relationships in the community and other things, that, and because it's more than one campsite, that we're considering a CUP for this? I mean, it's a little bit unique in the sense that it doesn't seem, you know, I'm hearing that there's not a commercial element, that it's, you know, donation-based or whatever, if they have people coming up. But I'm trying to get my arms around what this interaction is with the public and why we're, it seems like it's more than that on some level. I mean, I understand some of the personal aspects of it and all those types of things, but what's the element of this that is putting the proposal, you know, into a different category of land use that we need to be considering a CUP for this? Other than, is it strictly, you know, this is how something's defined, and therefore you have to do this? You know, what's, what kind of impacts from a staff perspective are you seeing through this process? I mean, I know we got a lot of different comments and everything, but what's your assessment of that?
Well, certainly, their operation is not something we typically condition applications to. They're held to the same zoning ordinance standards of any other use. So because they intend to bring up groups, even if they're not gonna charge them, church groups, Boy Scouts, school groups, it becomes a campground as defined by the zoning ordinance, which puts it into a different category than just, hey, I'm having my, you know, family members up to camp on the weekends. I mean, that's why we're here. Same thing with the bed and breakfast. I mean, if they, you know, it's certainly their business if they wanna charge people or not to come up and use it, but if it's not immediate family members, immediate friends, kinda thing, then it falls under that kinda bed and breakfast designation. Certainly, given its location, having the agency comments as it regards fire and rescue, building code requirements, which we have issue with in some of these areas of the county, you know, they're trying to do it by the book. And it certainly entitles them to having, you know, if they want to charge people to stay, they certainly have the right to do that, whether that's invitationally, like they're stated as part of their thing, or they wanna, you know, put it on a website and have people come stay. I mean, that's kind of, you know, what they're entitled. Again, they're trying to do it by the book. So sanitary sewer, getting the Health Department comments, and resolved, you know, reaching out to the Fire Marshal's office, reaching out to the local fire company, making sure that they are aware that there's not just vacant land up here, there, people may be camping up here, people may be staying for the weekend at someone's house that aren't residents or immediate friends and family. And also, the building code standards, you know, making sure that if they're gonna have a campground, they're gonna have someone come up. Certain campsites will need to be accessible, you know, they'll have to have the right grade, they'll have to have a hard-surface path to get, you know, people from, you know, where they may park, or where they may use the bathhouse, to the campsite and back. So that's the precipice for having a conditional use permit being required.
Gotcha. Yeah, 'cause to me, that's the dynamic here, is really trying to understand the level of intensity that we're, what we're really considering. You know, it's, I hear what the applicant's describing, and I, you know, I look at what the, I mean, what the potential could be, and just trying to make kinda sense of that. So I appreciate your response.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mo. Any other questions? Mr. Klein?
I'll just add a comment that I kinda agree along with Chris. I think we're walking a fine line between CUP and by right. And if this was under R5, Residential Recreational Community District, as Shawnee Land is, looks like indoor and outdoor recreational facilities is by right. So private campground is by right. So a lot of this stuff, you could've done by right if you'd just been a little bit further and within Shawnee Land. But I understand the need to go through the CUP process.
Good. Thanks, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I agree with what's being said. I'm having difficulty seeing why we're doing this here tonight. I see that this activity happens probably on a lot of other locations, rural locations around Frederick County, and no one comes in for CUP. So I guess I'm really, I have a difficulty in why we're even doing this. If they're not gonna charge money, they're not gonna have a sign up, they're not gonna advertise, they're just gonna invite friends and church groups, and, you know, Boy Scout squad camping, church groups squad camping. So I'm not sure why we're doing this, but I'm trying to understand.
Okay. Well, we got into a discussion here a little bit, so let's, if there's no more questions, Mr....
I have just a statement. To me, a campground is the ground itself, regardless of how many camping sites is on that, number of tents. I just, I'm like, Mr. Thomas, I don't understand the conditional use permit.
Okay. Thanks, sir. This is a public hearing tonight. There's no other questions. Before I open the public hearing, I wanna remind everyone, we have a large crowd tonight, okay? We have a three-minute timer. Mr. Ruddy will be manning the clock. So when you do speak, come up to the podium, state your name, where you live, and keep your comments concise into three minutes, and we'll have a good evening. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on this conditional use permit application, come forward now.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. My name is Eric Stillman. Sorry, I was wearing a mask. My wife's about to have surgery. I don't wanna get sick, so. My name is Eric Stillman, and I work with Patrick at the Corps of Engineers. And we see a lot of stuff that we do. We do a lot of designs, we do a lot of projects overseas. And we are, this area here for the Tuscarora Trails, it's pretty isolated. And that's why we're trying to have less of an impact, because it's so nice. We don't, you know, you don't wanna really do much to detract from that. And I can say myself, as a hiker, having the Tuscarora Trail is sort of a blessing. When the Appalachian Trail gets really busy, the Tuscarora was built in 1969 because they thought that, at one time, Winchester was gonna become Loudoun County, and they wanted to preserve an area that hikers could still go and walk through. The only thing about the Tuscarora is you can walk from, or excuse me, you can hike from the Appalachian Trail all the way to this point and never see the valley, until you get to the Smith's property where the Valley View Trail is, and it showed that wide-open expanse. Myself, if I had that opportunity to walk through and to see that, to see what I was walking, you know, beyond, I think that would be, you know, something really nice before I continued on to go to Harrisonburg and go back into the Appalachian Trail. I think what they're trying to do, when there was these commercial or things of that nature, really, it's, it seems like what they wanted to do is, again, family, friends, church groups, everyone's doing it anyway. That's what we have this area for. But because of the language that was already in, you know, they're trying to do it the right way. And it's, you know, I really commend them for it. It's gonna be, you know, a steep road ahead. Of course, some of the things we wanna do, waste gray water collection, but I think it's a great idea for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Chris Barron, and I live at 1,008 Timber Ridge Trail, which is at the very top of the mountain in Shawnee Land. I'm here tonight to express my deep opposition to this condition... I'm here tonight to express my deep opposition to this conditional use permit. If this was just for friends and family, none of us neighbors would actually be here. However, the CUP before you proposes to allow the construction of a five-bedroom bed and breakfast, a 30-10 site campground with 10 bunk houses, two bathhouses, and a commercial kitchen with absolutely no restriction on running this as a completely commercial cove-style enterprise. The code lays out the standards the board shall consider when deciding on whether to approve a conditional use permit. This application before you fundamentally fails to meet several of those standards. The proposed bed and breakfast and campground is located in a residential area where there are no other businesses and will require using roads maintained by the taxpayers of Shawnee Land for purely residential traffic. The individuals and families who live on the mountain have chosen to live there in what can sometimes be very challenging circumstances, expressly to live in the quiet and remote mountain setting that currently exists. The proposed CUP before you could have a devastating impact on the mountain, the quality of life for the families who live there, and on our property values. We do not oppose any development of this tract of land. In fact, I would have no opposition to a friends and family style approach that was mentioned. However, what is before you is overly broad, and that development should not come at the expense of the individuals and families who have made this mountain their home for decades. Any proposed development should be consistent with the existing uses and not result in the disruption of life for individuals and families. A campground would mean additional car and truck traffic, in addition to potential RV and trailer traffic, which would be a substantial burden on the underdeveloped mountain roads. There are 40 homes on the mountain that rely on Wolf Spring Trail as the sole road on and off of our mountain. What is currently a sleepy, narrow, and winding residential street will be overburdened with a dramatic increase in overall traffic.
Be wrapping it up, please.
This new traffic would come from visitors unfamiliar with challenging roads on the mountain. Indeed, a traffic engineer from Kimberly Horn, using the information from the ITE Trip Generation Manual, produced a trip generation study based on this actual CUP application. Assuming full occupancy, this traffic engineer estimates 208 trips a day, which annualizes out to 75,920 trips per year. Finally, Mr. Smith has shown no interest in our community's concerns and no interest in addressing the numerous problems in his conditional use permit. Last night, when he was asked point-blank why he wouldn't amend his application to reflect what he says his actual vision is, his response was, "Because no one asked me nicely." Well, we are here tonight asking nicely, did his application be withdrawn or rejected?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Castile. I'm a resident of the Opecan District in Frederick County, and I appreciate the disconnect here between what Mr. Smith has said and what was applied for in the cup, and all we can really address tonight is what the cup is about. And so I just want to point out from the Frederick County zoning ordinance, some conditions, or some standards that you guys are supposed to judge or use in determining whether to approve this cup or not. And I've got four I want to try to cover here real quickly. The first two say that the conditional use shall not tend to change the character and established pattern of development of the area, and the second one is that it shall be in harmony with and shall not adversely affect the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. The HOAs that's been mentioned is, says that this wilderness area is intended just for that, a wilderness area full of wildlife. It's a wilderness area. The deed of dedication of the HOA says that the HOA was adopted and intended to preserve and protect the undisturbed beauty of the area by providing limited access trails within the area. But it seems like what's being asked for in this cup is vastly different from what's there now, and so I think these two standards are not met by this cup and are cause for it to be denied. The third standard is that the cup shall be approved only if adequate facilities, roads, safe access, and drainage are provided. You saw the picture of the road, and even though it's a 50-foot easement, the road is a one-lane road, single-lane road. It has no shoulder, and it works fine for the very limited number of people that go through that at this point, but if two cars or more traffic come together, head-to-head, they've got to go off into the ditch on either side to make room to pass. Four-wheel-drive vehicles do that just fine. A lot of conventional cars would bottom out during wet weather, would damage the ditch. The HOA is responsible for maintaining that road, it's not paid for by Shawnee Land, and it's not fair for the other lot owners to be expected to pay for that. So there's, there's not much in the way of any infrastructure up there as far as phone lines, the electric is unreliable, there's unreliable cell service, there's no trash, there's no water, no sewer. So there's a lot of infrastructure that is missing that make it not fit this third standard. Then the fourth standard is that the conditional use shall conform with all applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, but the SOA really has not been considered very much in their planning and what they're going to do. And the HOA, well, it's already come out that the sign that was granted in the cup is not permitted by the HOA, and so why is it in the cup? It needs to be stricken. The cup is simply not what fits these standards, what was applied for is not meeting the standard you guys have given. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Twelve years ago, we purchased a property.
Sir?
Sorry, my name is Sean Gardner. Sorry.
And where you live?
Twelve years ago, we purchased a property five homes down from the Smith's land precisely because of the peace and quiet and low traffic flow it offers. Being on a dead-end ridge-top trail is sort of good for that kind of thing. Since finding out about the Smith's cup application, last week, the disingenuousness surrounding the Smith's approach to this process has made it necessary for members of our two communities to seriously distrust what the Smith's say are their dream intentions for this commercial operation. We sat through a two-hour presentation last night, and at no point did the Smith's defend what was actually in their application. Instead, opting to simply tell us what their dream intentions were for their 100 acres, none of which aligned with their application. To explain this contradicting information, they simply placed the onus on this commission. If that confuses the commission, you aren't alone. No one followed that explanation last night either. The Smith's line of distraction claims of ignorance of the process and shifting of blame is indicative of what we have seen as residents of Shawnee Land. Just last week, the Smith's wrote their only letter to the communities expressing their dream intentions behind this application, only after being informed earlier that day of our residents' extreme protest to the building of their commercial operation. In the letter, the Smith's claim this was not a large commercial operation but a private residence, yet their application made it clear that it was proposed to be just that, a large commercial operation. In the letter, the Smith's claim they are cutting a private driveway, thus, the ingress and egress of any emergency vehicle will not be hindered. Yet, that driveway has no impact on the fact that there is only one challenging road up the mountain peppered with so many switchbacks and steep inclines that VDOT deems it too underdeveloped to be considered for public designation. In the letter, the Smith's claim they have no interest in operating anything open to the general public. This is for their private use with friends and family, yet, in that very same letter, they were proud to announce they have been working with members of the Frederick County Tourism Bureau. In that letter, the Smith's claim they have been working with the PATC to build hiker shelters and bring water sources to the Tuscarora Trail, yet the PATC denies all of this, going so far as to say in the submitted documentation that prior to last week, the PATC was not aware of the Smith's project, had no need for set assistance, and have not collaborated on any such planning. These are just some of the falsehoods spread by the Smith's in transparent attempts to stop the hemorrhaging of immense public sentiment against their commercial operation. With all of this, how are the residents of Shawnee Land supposed to objectively trust the Smith's on their claims? Claims like additional traffic will be minimal on our Shawnee Land roads despite the findings of the traffic study firm's trip generation study? How are we supposed to objectively trust the Smith's on their claims that RVs and the like will not be permitted to visit their commercial operation despite there being nothing in place preventing that from taking place? Please reject this.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Sargent, and I live in Shawnee Land, and I had some concerns.
Ma'am, just pull that mic down just so, there you go.
Good challenge, sorry.
That's all right. That's quite all right. There you go.
I had some concerns as well. For one thing, the CUP indicated that the B&amp;B would include up to five bedrooms, and I'm wondering, as well as the future bathhouses, et cetera, is the health department going to be able to issue a permit? Is it going to be a viable septic system for this, this quantity that's going to be needed? One of the other things that concerns me is we've had some fires up there in Shawnee Land. You know, I'm sure there are fires everywhere, however, at the top of the mountain, it could be a little testy. We had one last year on Inca, and they had a hard time trying to get that one out, and that's not too far away from where we live, and it's scary. And you think of, at the max, 30 campsites in the summertime, and it's dry, and we have campfires going at night. All it's going to take is one to get totally out of control, and that could be a very, very scary thing for everything. We could be just like California, you know, had the issues with theirs. And as he spoke of this being supposedly a residential, you know, it's not business, it's just residential. Why are you in contact with the Tourism Bureau? If you're just having a residence, it's just a house. I'm not getting the Tourism Bureau to refer people to come see me. I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but that's, that's my personal opinion about that. You know, and I guess to kind of sum up here, you know, as it states in the paperwork for the agenda, that the definition of a CUP is that it allows special land uses which may be desirable but are not always appropriate based on a location and surrounding land uses. And in my personal opinion, this is not appropriate use for where we live right now. It's like I said, they, he indicated that, in his letter, for instance, he indicated they paid three sanitary district fees. They're treated like witch hazel, which is not technically part of Shawnee Land, but they have to pay the fee. Technically, they pay for the Valley View property, which they do not occupy because it only has a storage facility on it. I guess it has an address for that. They own property on Archwood, and I asked him about that last night. I said, you know, the county records only show two. How are you paying three? Well, as he indicated just a little bit ago, they intend to purchase another piece of property. So if and when they buy this, will it be combined with what they have? Do they intend to go further with it? So if so, will they have to get a new CUP if this one is approved? What I'm asking is that possibly that the commission, if nothing else, table this for the time being until we can all get some more information, even with Shawnee Land residents, and discuss with the applicants to see if there's a way we can both come together. The end.
Thank you.
My name is Seth Castile. I'm the sole resident of Valley View Trail that lives full-time. My address is 681 Valley View Trail. During our annual meeting of members last year, I was asked to serve the board as a volunteer board member at large. Therefore, my voice represents Valley View Trail in its entirety. You were provided with a set of signed papers. On Valley View Trail, there are 12 lots that are accessed only by Valley View Trail. There was an outback trail that connected our neighborhoods down to the lower sections. You have been provided pictures showing this is nothing but trees and forest. It is not accessible as ingress or egress by vehicle. Of those 12 lots, you have signatures representing nine lot owners. That is over three-quarters majority of the vote. The residents of Valley View Trail say, "No, we do not want this. We will welcome a single-family residence in which his friends and family are welcome to stay in a spare bedroom overnight as the rest of us do." However, the additional traffic is not supported by our only $3,000 that we use to maintain our roads per year. I have personally spent over 10 hours with my own tractor in free service to the SOA just to keep our roads barely drivable. This was done to save funds, funds that he intends to rip completely away from us with the additional traffic he will provide. We ask that you keep in mind that John Dar is indeed one of our board members, but a board member cannot speak independent of the community. They are required by law to go through a proper process of a quorum meeting and a vote of two-thirds of the community. It is also clearly stated here in our original deed of dedication, as Mr. Castile, my father, pointed out, it is intended to be, to preserve the land as it sits currently, and 30 campsites, two multiple bunk houses, commercial kitchens, this does not meet the way the land looks currently. It is a complete change in the very reason that these same people that say no voted no. We wanted our land hermetic and sealed off and not for use by anyone but owners on that road. As for the violation, you are also provided pictures showing that the piece of concrete that has been poured there is clearly in violation of our Section 5, Number 8 article stating that it is required that driveways be maintained with a 12-inch minimum culvert. Again, John Dar does not have the ability to speak for the full board or its community members. This must go through a proper process. We ask that you please help us protect our lands and the reason we bought them by disallowing this cup. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
To add one more Castile.
Okay.
My name is Joan Castile, and yes, my husband and my son have already spoken, and I have just two quick points, should take under two minutes. Number one, the fire hazard has already been mentioned. I'm going to mention it again. This is up primarily wooded and wilderness area, meaning there's a lot of brush, dead trees, and other plant material everywhere. It is also the top of a mountain, the highest point in Frederick County. Do you people know it? The highest point in Frederick County, which means very high winds a great deal of the time. As has been stated and shown, there is one means of egress behind a locked gate. The Smiths are asking for 30 campsites. That's 30 fires, possibly manned by 30 drunken campers. There are no fire hydrants. There are no, there's not a water tower. This alone should get every person in this room. Point two, in their letter to the community, the Smiths stated that applying for this conditional use permit is the path to fulfilling one of their dreams. I believe in dreams. I believe in making dreams a reality if it is all possible, but other people have dreams as well. The nine lot owners who have sent letters in opposition have dreams. The people of Shawnee Land who have signed petition have dreams. Unfortunately, the Smith's idea of a dream is these people's nightmare. Under these adverse conditions, wouldn't it be better if this cup is denied, leaving the Smiths free to find another place for their dream, someplace where there is, they would be more welcome? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Sir, over here, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Justin Kearns. I'm the executive director of the Winchester-Fredrick County Convention and Visitors Bureau. I've been mentioned a few times already. Thank you. So first off, I would like to mention, and I'm very sincere in saying this, that our role is simply looking at this from a very limited tourism office filter. So we do strongly believe in and respect the process that's in place at the county level that we're going through right now regarding zoning and public input to decide whether a proposed project anywhere in the county is ultimately the right fit. So I'm not speaking to any of the, any of the property owners or anything like that. All we're looking at specifically is the, you know, the proposed project as it stands. Based on several conversations with Patrick and Alicia Smith and a recent site visit to the property, we did support, we do feel that we should support the proposed project for these specific reasons. First off, our tourism strategy does support increased access to and conservation of our beautiful outdoor recreation opportunities, including the Tuscarora Trail. I should mention that the number-one leisure traveler to the Shenandoah Valley by 70% is visiting friends and relatives. So when they talk about nonprofit groups, friends, family, relatives, that is in our wheelhouse, absolutely, that's our number-one visitor that we have here, and organizations and destinations that do support that, we absolutely support them because they come and they spend money, they go to our stores, they go to our shops, they go to our restaurants. They're just the same as people that would be going to a hotel. They're just coming and visiting friends and relatives, so they're very important. Second, our tourism strategy does encourage locally-owned businesses and entrepreneurs. And then finally, this project does appear to be supported by the county's 2035 Comprehensive Plan in two sections, Chapter 2 Rural Areas, there are two goals in there, and then Chapter 4, the Business Development and Tourism, there are two goals within there. I don't want to go through and read the entire thing, I've got it with me, but I'm sure you can look that up. I've got it with me, but I'm sure you can look that up if you want to. But those, it does support those. And then finally, last note, we do like the idea of increased traffic on the Tuscarora Trail. We love the idea of people who love the outdoors, birders, families, outdoor enthusiasts who are on the Tuscarora Trail. That's more eyes, that's more people that are there to conserve and protect that trail and discourage negative use of the trail and any, any sort of nefarious use that happens up on the trail. So we do encourage that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I see a hand up over here.
My name is Lynn Schmidt. I'm a resident chairman for Shawnee Land. I stand here tonight to ask the planning commission to not allow this CUP application to move forward. This application is filed and based on untrue and/or inaccurate accounts. The fact that 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Tuscarora Trail are being used to substantiate the potential origin for this proposed business is nothing more than a play for the county's approval. With the understanding that the county is seeking ideas for additional recreational tourism and wanting to increase the usage of visitor attendance with the Tuscarora Trail. The land supervisor for the trail has stated that they are not working with and have no plans to work with the Smiths on this project. A majority of the application is based on the proposed business, which includes B&B campground, hasn't revolved around the trail, and potential site visitors. The fact that there is no working agreement between the PATC and the potential site with the Smiths is a reason enough for the CUP to be pulled. The Smiths insist that they have had no inkling as to how the application for the CUP should be applied for. With Mr. Smith being a real estate and/or an investment property broker, along with his wife, who is a property manager, that is a little hard to accept as truth. Their proposal is nothing more than a request for a business to be commissioned above our quaint residential community and using our development and amenities for the added lore. If you proceed with the acceptance of the Smiths' application for the CUP request, you are doing so without the community's approval and ignoring all our fears and concerns. As chairman for the Shawnee Land Sanitary Advisory Committee, I oppose the submitted request, as I have heard from numerous homeowners, that this proposal is not in our community's best interest. I am here as a voice for the residents of our community. The only people that this application would benefit is the Smiths, who are brand-new to our community. The county would also be setting a precedence that Shawnee Land would be open to commercial usage, thus causing our community to lose its value as a residential, family-based development. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry. Anyone else? This man.
Hi, my name is Natalie Meltzer, and excuse my voice, I've got a cold right now. I didn't prepare anything because I haven't had time to. I just found out about this two weeks ago. Thanks to these people who posted it online and incited a lot of frustration by a lot of residents. I would tell you about my dreams and the dreams that my neighbors have shared with me over the past few weeks, but I don't need to. You guys live here. You know where Shawnee Land is. You know what it looks like up there. They showed you some great pictures. But the reality is, and I left my sheet over there, there's a lot of residents and a lot of lot owners that bought that property because they have dreams too. I'm not asking you to be fair because life isn't fair. If it's fair, then, then... Life's not meant to be fair, but I'm asking you to be just. It's not just to put the dreams of the Smiths and their business as more valuable than the dreams of my neighbors and myself. It's just not right. That's all I have to say because I'm too upset to talk.
Okay.
Because I just heard that they bought more property, which means it's not just a hundred acres. It's a hundred and, what's Mrs. What's-her-name's property?
Another hundred.
So two hundred acres. And of course, she would agree that, she would agree with anything they want to do because she's selling a hundred acres of land. And I don't blame her. She's probably a sweetheart who's looking to sell her property and retire like we all want to do someday, like many of us bought property in Shawnee Land to do. Not me, because I'm not old enough to retire yet, which is why I didn't have time to prepare anything. I was busy working. And I didn't have to because this has been running through my head for the past two weeks, which is why I can't speak clearly. And I swear, I'm normally more educated and enunciated than this, but it's frustrating and upsetting, and I'm not used to watching a clock. So...
You're doing fine.
There you have it. Please don't approve this because it wrecks our dreams.
Thank you. You did well. Thank you. Anyone else? Let's not have that, but that, let's not have the clapping. Thanks. This man.
My name is Lisa Croisdale. I live at 1002 Timber Ridge Trail. We've had our property since 2009. My husband and I are neighbors of the Smiths. I'm choosing to call them neighbors, and I'm praying that others on the mountaintop will come around to doing the same. I met them on Sunday afternoon after church because we were anxious about the meeting on Tuesday night. We just felt like it was going to be very ugly and adversarial. So we invited them over for coffee, and they were in our living room in under an hour, having coffee for two hours and explaining their vision. My husband and I were discussing, you know, with them what their vision was, and I won't belabor my message, as I'm sure you've been inundated with a barrage of all kinds of other stuff. It's hard for me not to get aggravated with all the fire-fanning, knee-jerking, and general nitpicking that has erupted, all because these folks decided to go through proper channels to pursue their project/vision. I can think of far worse scenarios up top there. You know, I understand some of the, some of the issues because I myself was not supportive of this before. But they put their number on the letter that they, that they sent out to people, asking them to come to them, to talk to them, so they could allay their, their fears. These are just nice kids that are, that want to do something nice up there. They're, they're... This is a vision for them. You know, they, I just, I can think of far worse scenarios. You know, other places gobbling up the land up there. There's a firing range up there, for gosh sakes. You know, people go up there and shoot guns. You know, I'm not really keen on that, but, you know, that's their deal. But it just, you know, they're nice people. It just really saddens me that people couldn't approach them and try and work this out first. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dana Bron, and I'm living on 311 Bear Trail. I've been here for fifty years. I came up here as a kid when my parents bought a piece of property to, to be able to tent on. And back then, it was Marjick Incorporated, which ended up going, they sold property after property, and Shawnee Land disappeared. You know, the lodge is gone. Everything is gone. It wasn't until 2006 that I decided to build a house up there right near, right on the end of Timber Ridge Trail. And I watched people come through there all the time with four-wheelers at three o'clock in the morning, and he owns, now owns the house. So I didn't get any notice until last week, then anything was actually happening here for me to even be able to prepare a statement. Marjick, I have down here, Marjick actually crushed Shawnee Land, and I watched it go from a guard gate to what it is now. It wasn't until 2006 that even paved the roads. All right? So, and on a daily basis, I passed people left and right trying to get up and down on the roads of Wolf Spring and Timber Ridge. And it's a hassle to get back and forth on that. I can't imagine more people coming back and forth. I applaud the entrepreneurial spirit. I like that. I've actually thought about, wow, what if I put up a bed and breakfast up here? That'd be a pretty good idea. But then what would that do to other people? So what I ended up doing is I built a bigger house. So if I wanted people to come up there and visit me, they actually could. I've also had a situation up there where somebody had a really bad problem in my house. It took twenty-five minutes for the fire department to get there. I was there to watch the fire on Inca and wondering whether it was going to come up the mountain. All I'm asking you guys is please say no to this. There's a lot of people that are in Shawnee Land. We actually, I live on the top. I love it up there. Okay? I like it the way it is. And I actually have somebody building across the street from me, and I'm thinking to myself, my God, couldn't you have built someplace else where you could get another view somewhere else? But too many people in too close a spot, it's ridiculous. And I do applaud their entrepreneurial spirit with this, but I oppose it. A hundred percent. I'm asking you to say no for a lot of the different reasons. It's just more paving, more traffic. And the house that I built up there, actually all the trusses fell off on Wolf Spring Trail. I spent two hours trying to get past that thing. So I can just see the commercialism and everything else coming to that part of our lives, and that's the way I'm looking for it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. This gentleman right here, he's been patient.
Thank you, folks. Thank you. My name's Rick Stobbs. I live at 105 Shawnee Court. Been a resident of Shawnee Land for over twenty-five years, property owner up there for over thirty years. And I listen, what I look at is, I heard mentioned up here by the board, who owns the roads of Shawnee Land, which they say is owned by Frederick County. But the roads are paid for and maintained by the homeowners of Shawnee Land. Not one penny of the taxpayers' money outside of Shawnee Land goes in to maintain the infrastructure, the roads, the upkeep, and the amenities of Shawnee Land. And we're on a tight budget with our dues going up this year again. Mr. Smith says friends and family. What does that consist of? He mentioned the PATC, the Potomac Appalachian Trail Club, who has property that adjoins Mr. Smith's property, whose agenda is aligned together with hiking and trail. Are his friends the over seventy-six hundred members of the PATC? When I pulled up the PATC Annual Review of 2017, they like the whole defense. They want to, they want to bring more campers in. They had one in 2017 at Old Rag Mountain, which is down in Madison County, where that event brought in over twelve-hundred-and-seventy-six hikers. Our roads, our infrastructure can't handle that. He mentions about being a nonprofit. Does that, Mr. Ambrogi, who was an attorney, does that prohibit him from paying the sanitary district tax? Nobody in Frederick County can give me that answer. I spoke to the Commissioner of Revenue, who in turn turned us over to the county treasurer, Mr. Hornedoff, who pulled out maps and maps of Shawnee Land. And the PATC has property up there, and being a nonprofit, do not have to pay real estate taxes. But he could not find anywhere where they have paid any sanitary district tax. Would that apply also to Mr. Smith if he becomes a nonprofit where he doesn't have to pay any sanitary district tax, like the PATC? But nobody can give me a clear answer in the county of who does and who doesn't have to pay these fees. I just think with the increase of traffic, we can't look at what we have in the immediate impact. We got to look at the future impact. Are we opening a Pandora's Box to allow other people to have property up there and say, we're recreation? We want to bring in, and I work and support ATVs and UTVs. We want to have ATV trails, UTV trails, rock crawls climbing up and down the mountains. Our roads can't handle it. But if you allow one, can you deny the others? I really think we're opening a Pandora's Box here, and that Shawnee Land, for what it was originally designed to be, has changed over the years. We are a private subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else? I got a young, back here to the back. I'll grab her first there. Back to you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Floyd, and I've been running my family bed and breakfast of five rooms, Pembroke Springs Retreat in Star Tannery for almost twelve years. We are about twenty minutes down the road from the Smith family, but as the crow flies, we're just over the mountain, and we're located in Frederick County. I would like to shed a different light and maybe share a bit of a reality check in terms of concerns for traffic. Basically, it affects our road very little. I'm able to monitor our traffic with some basic surveillance that we have down below. During the third week of March, which is our busiest month of the year due to spring break, between March 18th and March 25th, we had a total of eleven guest cars drive on Wardensville grade for the entire week. Five of those left and returned to the bed and breakfast for the purpose of touring the area, which Mr. Sheets has expressed the advantages of. They tend to frequent places like Old Town, the Museum of the Shenandoah Valley, and local farm markets. Our neighbors, including Norma Sheets, who's lived down the grade since my parents opened in 2001, have informed me that there is no noticeable difference on the road. My father bought the property in 1968. Just like many innkeepers, our bed and breakfast is more of a lifestyle than a business. So if Alicia and Patrick had any ideas of a commercial business, unfortunately, I might be, have been the responsible party for maybe squashing any dreams. I have tried to mentor them a little bit, and I've shared the reality of the fact that running a bed and breakfast is a very difficult business and very hard to profit. We ourselves have a mission to improve our community through cultural education and experiences. We have provided free events such as tea ceremony, women's luncheons, and mushroom forays for our local community. Obviously, we pay our state and local taxes and fees, but we've also donated to local and non-local charities, organizations, and churches. I'm most proud of our conference that we co-sponsored to fight human trafficking last year. In addition, like the Smith family, we are huge environmentalists, and we have taken, taken being certified Virginia Green to a whole new level by adopting two and a half miles of Wardensville grade for many years now. My son, who sits in the back of the room, has helped me clean the road up since he was four. We, and we do this project basically once a month. It takes us a lot of our time, and I see those same qualities in Alicia and Patrick and Lily. I've gotten to know them, and I see that they have the same spirit to serve. They care deeply about the community and the environment. I have sat down with them and brainstorms about how they can benefit Shawnee Land and the residents. As our county has stopped recycling glass, we even deliver our glass to them for their courtyard vision. I can only see allowing them to start their venture as a positive for their neighbors in Shawnee Land. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Right here in front.
Hi, my name is Lisa Stillman, soon to be a property owner up there in Shawnee Land. Right now, we currently live still in Frederick County. I would say a little bit about the taxes. If they own that property in their personal names, it's going to be taxed because it's not the business. I am very much in support of them. I know that their vision, based on the application, doesn't look quite what their vision looks like in person. I also know that they plan on doing some very environmentally friendly building. They plan on using water reclamation. They plan on using rain-water catchment. So I'm sure that there will be additional water up there, especially with the rain that we've had in the last few years. They probably would have ample amounts of rain. I feel that it's, it's something that they, they don't envision anywhere near the number. I don't think it'll ever be at full capacity. If they don't plan on being it as a business, to have that, that size of a business, they would have to have employees, and I just don't see that, that being in part of that plan. They want to, they want to be owner-operators to have thirty campsites. You're going to need somebody to manage it. You're not going to be able to handle it on your own. So I don't see it turning into quite that, that aspect. I also, it's a conditional use permit. So my understanding of the conditional use permits is that you can put conditions into it that will say, maybe the, the rights to do this don't transfer if the property transfers hands, or something to that effect. So, you know, I'm sure that they are up for negotiation. They just wanted to go about it the right way. So if, you know, if there's changes that are recommended, that they can, that will fit with their vision, I don't think they would have any problems with it. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Barry Van Meter. I live in Shawnee Land. I'm also on the committee up there. I would like to draw your attention, this is very similar to the Verizon Tower that was installed several years back. We were given little to no notice, and as of right now, we've had ten days' notice about this hearing. The committee was advised on the 24th. Our roads are very important to us up there, and we rejected Verizon's CUP to use our roads for their heavy equipment and construction. This year, we lost $300,000 of our fund. Due to the rains and the flooding, tore out our roads. We have got no time to go over how much traffic are we going to have. No one can give us an honest answer, so we'd like to have at least some kind of study showing how much do they expect? What effect is this going to have? Fortunately, Wolf Spring Trail, as I mentioned, is a very poor road, goes up to the top. We maintain it. We maintain it highly because of weather conditions up there deteriorate it quickly. It's tar and chip roads, not paved. Second thing that we'd like to bring up is, we had an emergency meeting yesterday. We had 47 people show up for this presentation. Again, short notice. Our quarterly meetings would have been more appropriate to bring this to Shawnee land so we could get out and have them talk to us about it. We had 40, 47 people there. That's three times as many people that came to talk about the $100 increase in our sanitary district fees. So obviously, this is extremely important to the residents there. I believe there's a petition on the you got that has 300 signed signatures opposing this. My question is, in listening to all this, and I came into this very late yesterday, was actually my first chance to actually work on this, is I saw the picture posted at the mailbox. And we heard the intent here today that it's friends and family. As several board members here asked or questioned, that doesn't require a CUP. You know, I can have friends come to my farming camp with no problems. So what is the intended purpose going forward into the future? And how in the future is this going to affect Shawnee land? Particularly with the fees. We talk about the fees here. The standard sanitary district fee is for basically one house, which may have, what, two, maybe three cars? If we're going to talk about fees applied to a commercial business accessing our roads, we need to actually start to talk about the number of cars and start assessing those fees based on how many people he expects to have at this campsite. What impact he's going to have on those roads needs to be taken care of as far as Shawnee land is concerned. In particular, I would ask that this be tabled, pushed forward, so that he can come to a quarterly meeting and present it to the entirety of Shawnee land. Then it can be brought back to you all with the actual results from the Shawnee land meeting.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Close the public hearing portion of our meeting. Commissioners, discussion. Mr. Oats.
Yeah, I just want to read off something. The people that own land in actual Shawnee land, it's under R5. I'm just going to read off permitted uses. In other words, you don't have to come before this committee to do this. Now, whether or not you have to go to the HOA, that's another matter. But as far as Frederick County is concerned, here's things that you're allowed to do by right. All uses that are in the RP district. All uses that are in the B1 Neighborhood District, except car washes and funeral homes. Enduring outdoor recreational facilities. Restaurants. Hotels and lodges. Service stations. Private campgrounds. Heliports. Recreational storage. General business. General merchandise store. That's all under R5 that you can do by right. And if their property happened to be under R5, we wouldn't be here because they do it by right, just like you would have the ability to do it by right. Now, I would support tabling this because I think the conditions and the application presented does sound different than what they got up and spoke to, what they wanted to. So if the commissioner wanted to table this, I would support that. But I just wanted to point out that a lot of you that were speaking against us, you can do by right, and you don't have to come before us like they did. You can do that on your property right now. Anybody in the community, you could buy four or five lots together. Again, if it's an HOA issue, that doesn't speak to the ordinance. But as far as Frederick County is concerned, you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oats. Anyone else? Mr. Thomas?
There's been a lot of discussion about the traffic. And, you know, most traffic generation models don't apply to campgrounds. So I'm not sure the number that was quoted, I'd be a little suspicious of. I think most campers, especially tent campers, will go to a site and stay there. They're not going to do a lot of in and outs. They're not going to be going out two, three times a day, increasing the traffic. You know, campers are pretty, they kind of go and stay and walk around. And they don't use their cars a whole lot. I think the road itself is going to be self-limiting on the people that go up there, the numbers of people that go up there. Probably, you know, you might want to go up once or twice and then decide, you know, I'm going to go somewhere else if all you want to do is go camping. I really, I still think if what the Smiths said were accurate, that this is friends and family, I'm not exactly sure why they're here. I don't know why they just don't build a house with, if they want 15 bedrooms, put 15 bedrooms in it and get the sewage system approved and build the house and have your friends and family up there. But, you know, I'm in favor of this. I really don't see the negative impact. Of course, there can be fires anytime. You know, so I don't know how we control that. But, you know, if what they say is correct, I think they're going to take fairly good care of the property and make a concerted effort to keep it environmentally sound and green. So I would support it. I'm not exactly sure why they need the conditional use permit yet. Still haven't been convinced. But, you know, I'll go with the commission, whether they want to table it and you want to talk to your neighbors more, if you want to pass it on to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Anyone else? Mr. Moan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I asked my question upfront about, you know, kind of getting some clarity about what it is and what we're really considering here. And I do think that at a minimum, it would need to be tabled for me to be comfortable with it, simply because I don't feel that there's an alignment between what we're seeing in an application and the conditions with what is necessarily described. And do I think something could potentially work up there? I think if it's something that can be agreed upon, I think to some degree with some neighbors and also with some, with some conditions that really address what it is they want to do. You know, I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm always sensitive to these rural-esque kind of proposals that are in the back of subdivisions, you know? Because even if it's a relatively nominal amount of trips, there's an impact to that, you know? And if folks are used to or expecting a certain type of activity level, you know, the fact is, this proposal, as it's before us, could generate, you know, a certain change in the intensity of what the use would be up there and what people would reasonably expect. So, yeah, again, that's maybe my personal struggle, more so that it is a collective one. And I felt that way about some of these event centers and things like that that we've come forward with. So I tend to feel like I want to give a little more weight to where the community is coming from and the neighborhoods coming from with their concerns. But I don't think this is something that can't be necessarily worked out. But I think there has to be some real dialogue to do that. And I don't know that that's really happened. So I'd be 100% supportive of a tabling to see if we could get a better CUP out of this and some maybe more targeted conditions to what the vision is and some alignment. But if it were to just move forward, I'm not sure I could support it in the condition it's in right now.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. Anyone else? I would just like to remind everyone that a conditional use permit is on the property. It's not for the applicant. So the applicants change over time, but conditional use permits go on forever. So it's on the property. And sometimes we lose track of that. But I just always like to remind everyone out there that where we're at with that.
Unless you place a condition that it stops with the property owner.
You're exactly right.
We can't have that condition.
So maybe that's what the discussion could be. I'm sorry, Mr. Trippit.
Yes. I would have to go along with Mr. Moan. And I know since my sister lives in Shawnee land, she would appreciate the fact that we do postpone this, give some more consideration, both sides. And it'll make her happy, feel more comfortable about it. I didn't read clues. So anyhow.
Well, you're here to make her happy.
I want to make her mad because you're bringing me cake and pie.
All right. Any other discussion?
Seeing no further discussion, your sister spoiled you, Chuck. But anyway, I really don't understand, as some people have quoted, why we are even doing this. And I hope that those that's negative towards this understands that they could pull this CUP on their own and do pretty well what they want to do up there without a CUP. I just want to make that clear. Also, I want to make it clear that CUPs, as someone mentioned, can be revoked at any point when the rules are broken. So we don't want to forget that. But seeing what the attitudes of my fellow commissioners are, I have no problem in making a motion that we table this for 45 days. And I'd hope that doesn't mean that everybody's going to get their guns more up against this CUP. Rather, try to work out something amongst each other. And not come back here with a lot of negative stuff. We're all in this thing together. And that's the way we have to look at it and work towards the common goal for the best of all. We plan, commissioners, that's what our goal is, to try to satisfy and be fair to all parties involved. So let's give it 45 days, a motion made that we table this for 45 days.
I have, I'm sorry, I was going to second. I have a motion to postpone. We don't table here, but we have a motion to postpone for 45 days. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second and just put forth that it would be, look for the applicant and planning staff to work together to tailor a set of conditions, more of what the applicant presented tonight instead of what we saw tonight.
So our motion is, and the second is, that we bring the two parties together, try to work to a more amenable type of an agreement. I have a motion. I have a second. It's time to vote. Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trumpet, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Bolden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Marston, yes.
The chair votes yes. This is postponed for 45 days. Goes toward the Board of Supervisors on April 24th. Thank you. Thank everyone for speaking. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, it doesn't go to the board now. It's just postponed. Thank you. Let's make a five-minute break, recess. Folks? Could you all move? We have one more item on here. Hey, Ron, how you doing, honey? Good.
Hello. Good.
Can I get all my commissioners back? Folks, next item on our agenda is an information discussion item for site plan subdivision number 23-18 for Liberty Chase. And it's submitted by Greenway Engineering.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is an information discussion item for a proposal to develop approximately 1.97 acres of land, which is presently zoned RP or residential performance, into 17 single-family attached dwelling units, better known as townhouses. The applicant, Greenway Engineering, or, sorry, Jeremy Tweedy, received a waiver of the master development plan requirements in July 2017. And when processing a master plan waiver, they are required to do a site plan, which is why we're here this evening to present this item to you all for information. The location of this property is Double Church Road or Route 641, immediately north of the intersection with Fairfax Pike or Route 277. It is in the Opeckin Magisterial District. It's identified with parcel identification numbers 75A58 and 75A59. Again, the property is presently zoned RP. It's currently vacant, and the proposed use is townhomes. If you can direct your attention to the screen, the subject properties are outlined in blue. They have frontage on Double Church Road, and they're surrounded by other like RP zone property, which is primarily residential. Access to the site is provided from Double Church Road via a private street, which will be known as Stella Court. The proposal also includes sidewalks on either side of the internal street for pedestrian connectivity within the development. And they will also be providing a five-foot-wide sidewalk along the frontage with Double Church Road to provide connections with properties on either side. They are also dedicating the future right-of-way, or the future condition of Double Church Road as a four-lane divided roadway as part of this proposal. In addition to the road improvements, the applicant will be providing recreational amenities, which will be determined at the time of construction. They will be provided in the form of an outdoor pavilion, playground, tot lot, or an equivalent recreational amenity. And they will also be providing the requisite residential separation buffers to screen the development from the adjacent properties and roadways. Again, directing your attention to the screen. Subject property is outlined in black. You have your frontage with Double Church Road here, which includes that 25-foot dedication for the future condition of Double Church Road as a four-lane roadway. You have your internal street, Stella Court, which provides access to the residences. And you have your proposed recreational amenity back here. And again, that would be an outdoor pavilion, tot lot, or an equivalent feature. The site plan for Liberty Chase is generally consistent with the requirements of the county zoning and subdivision ordinances. And it's in a form that is administratively approvable. This item is provided to you all this evening as an information and discussion item. There is no action necessary by the Planning Commission. Following your discussion this evening, this item is going to be presented to the Board of Supervisors for information and discussion. I am happy to answer any questions you have. And Mr. Jeremy Tweedy is here this evening as well, who's representing the development.
We won't be taking questions to Mr. Tweedy. But if anybody got any questions, to Mr. Klein tonight.
Senator.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Medley that spoke earlier, what was his address? Is he the gentleman in 301?
That's what I was looking for.
That's what we all were wondering. Where was?
I was looking for.
So he's on 301 Double Church Road? Now, on the master plan note, do we have protection between the town? Now, on the master plan note, do we have protection between the townhouses and?
We do.
Mr. Medley's property?
Mr. Tweedy is providing a category A-type buffer, which includes a 25-foot separation distance. A portion of that is going to be a planted buffer, which will include trees and shrubs. He's also providing a six-foot tall board-on-board fence along that property line. So he will be buffered as required by the zoning ordinance where townhomes are adjacent to single-family residences.
Now, the maintenance of that fence, that will be the, there'll be a HOA or something there that'll maintain that fence? It won't just be put up and then fall down in five years?
I believe, yeah, there'll be an HOA and it'll be, the HOA will be established after the creation of the development.
Okay. Now, on the other side, there's also a private residence, so it'll be protected on both sides?
It's all three sides. There's buffer on three sides. If I could direct your attention to the master plan, you have, it's not the landscape plan, but you do have a buffer that goes around all three sides of the development that includes a combination of distance, plantings, and fences. And he's fulfilling the requirements as established by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. There was a lot of filled dirt in there, so I assume that the county's going to go out there and make sure that the drainage is in accordance with the plan.
Part of the review of the site plan is approval of a stormwater management plan by the Department of Public Works, who implements the Virginia Stormwater Management Program. So Mr. Tweedy does have his approval from Public Works, and once the site plan is approved, as he's seeking occupancy, Public Works will go out and do an assessment to ensure that the stormwater facilities meet the standard in what is depicted on the plan.
Because when I looked at the amount of dirt that's in there in that pile, I was kind of wondering where it's going to go because there's more dirt than would seem. That's going to be the high point and the two properties on either side are going to be the low point, so.
Like to add on the grading?
We did an earth takeoff. There's about 3,000 cubic yard of shore material with the depth of topsoil that's on the site. So once we, from the roadways, the road grades, as we go back, that's all in fill. Beginning from Lot 1 on the southwest side to Lot 8, there's dirt from six inches to two and a half feet.
Let's, let's get back to here. We'll get into that when it goes on. This is just information discussion, so we won't be directing any more questions over to Jeremy. It's been a long night. They'll work out the, they'll work out the soil erosion controls. That'll get taken care of.
I go past it about four times a week, so.
We appreciate your due diligence there, so we'll just, don't let the staff handle that one. Any other discussion items here? Anybody else want to talk about this?
No.
Thank you. I have a motion for it to adjourn if there's no other items. We'll make, all those in favor?
Yeah.
I will be, they will have a meeting in two weeks. I like to, our next meeting is in two weeks. What is that, the 17th? Yes. Thank you. Good night.